Hey, so do we ever get the human resource thing resolved? Anybody, somebody? Hello? Ms. Havitt, my, uh, I need a freedom of information. Did y'all get that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I did a freedom of information. I received y'all the email a couple nights, well, a couple nights ago, twice, about what I asked y'all about a couple years ago about that, and I hadn't gotten it. But the Freedom of Information Act on records, and I never got any of them. So I sent the mayor and the city attorney and I see you and the mayor and the city attorney. I was trying to get some response on that, on the phone records and text messages. I've never received those as well. It's been, it's been, it's been two years since I've asked for it and hadn't received it. So I'm trying to see, uh, time is only getting 90 days, but time has ran out three or four, six, seven times. And just trying to see, does the mayor, can he respond to you? I know when I can get those documents so the council can recover.
I'll be glad to respond to that. And then when I open the meeting, the city attorney handles all of our requests, so.
Well, I, okay.
Let him respond to it. All right, it's after six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting at work. And first of all, welcome everybody, including KCLT and Helena West Helena, the world and anybody, any other guests or people who may be joining us, we want to welcome you tonight. This is the first meeting of 2021 and also the first meeting of a new city council in terms of our two-year terms on the city council. So I want to welcome all of our city council people and congratulate them on their election or reelection in this case. And then I think the first order of business is a call, is a, well, is a swearing, yeah, I'm sorry. So, um, so Ms. Ramsey, do we have someone on the call who's gonna swear somebody on?
It's gonna be me.
So.
It's gonna be me.
Okay.
I get to swear them in this time.
Okay, so those who have not been sworn in already, if you would, follow Ms. Ramsey's instructions. You're recognized, Ms. Ramsey.
I'm gonna read the state of Arkansas oath. It's I, and then state your name. Or you don't have to, just nod. Do solemnly swear, repeat, you're supposed to repeat that, but since you'll all have to get on at the end, you can say yes. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of councilperson upon which I am now about to enter. My term begins January 2021 and ends in 2022. So if Monica, would you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Crockett? Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Ford's already been sworn, uh, Ms. Crockett? Okay, every, uh, everybody, Ms. Crockett?
Okay, so we'll make, again, congratulations to those who have been reelected and sworn in for another two-year term. Thank you for your service. Thank you for running. I don't think most people understand, or maybe they do, and they're not willing to sacrifice what it takes to be on the council or any elected position, but I just want you to know, as the mayor of the city and on behalf of the city, thank you for your service. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And congratulations again on your reelection and on swearing in. Having said that, we will go with the road call. Again, Ms. Ramsey.
Davis?
Here.
Columbia? I see. Uh, Franklin?
Here.
Etherly?
Yeah, here.
Forward? Here. Crockett? All present, one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Uh, they're not minutes tonight. They will be on the next regular council agenda. And so the next thing on the agenda is the treasurer, Mr. Turner, are you, hold on a second. Make sure he's back. Well, we'll pass over Mr. Turner until he gets back in his chair. Turner, do you wanna, do you have a treasurer's report? I know we're gonna talk about the budget later, but.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, I won't have it till the next regularly scheduled council meeting. You guys need to discuss when it's gonna be. I'm sure they know that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, the first, for those who aren't familiar or might not be, the first meeting of the year after an election is an organizational meeting. Of course, this is a little bit unusual because we're doing it virtually. But the next two items on the agenda are organizational items, and one of those is a discussion about sending, setting a date, break in a time for regular council meetings, and then whether or not to use Robert Rules of Order as our guideline for the rules of order. So I will open up a discussion about setting the date and time for regular city council meetings in two years. Anybody wanna jump in there? Anybody, it's open discussion, so. Uh, we've been meeting.
Yeah, I would suggest we just keep the same schedule, first and third, uh, first and third Tuesdays for regular meeting.
Okay, so is there any discussion or other conversation about that?
I agree. I agree with that.
First and third Tuesday, is that what I heard?
First and third.
Okay, Ms. Ramsey, do we have to have a motion to adopt that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to continue with the first and third Tuesdays of the month?
So move.
Okay.
Mr. Franklin moves, Ms. Davis, I think, seconded the motion that we continue with the usual for second and third Tuesdays of the month, or first and third Tuesdays, I'm sorry. Any discussion, questions? If not, call the roll.
Forward? Yes. Etherly?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Crockett? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Question passes, so we will continue with the same rules that we've operated before in terms of meeting dates and times. The next item and the last item on the agenda for organizational purposes is whether or not to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as our manual to use for the conduct of the meetings. Is there any discussion about that?
I shall move.
Was that Mr. St. Columbia?
I move that we adopt the Robert's Rules of the Order.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Davis, seconded the motion, Mr. St. Columbia made the motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Orders or as the rules that we operate under the next two years. Any other discussion or questions about that motion? If not, call the roll.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward? Yes. Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? Crockett, uh, Crockett, St. Columbia?
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Motion passes, so we will use Robert's Rules of Order for the next two years.
Mustamay, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Andre Velasquez, the attorney, one of the things that also we have to discuss, technically, the, the emergency safeguards for meetings expired on January the first, and the legislature has yet to adopt anything, the legislative session that starts to Ja- to January 11. The legislature did a temporary amendment to the Freedom of Information Act which allowed us to have meetings via video, Zoom, telephone, et cetera, and, and that is expired. The, the issue is, we, we make sure that we notify the press. I just wanted to advise you of that, you had to continue to make sure the press is available on this line and to make sure that the, that the public has access to this, and we publish when, when and where and how we're gonna have these meetings so that we won't want to follow the Freedom of Information Act. Because the issue is, the basis for us doing this expired January the first, but as long as, Arkansas Spring Court has said, as long as the public has full access to these meetings and this published and the press has full access, then, then technically, we're still within the letter of the law. We have to advise you of this because of the January first date is coming past, and there may be a stopgap on January 11 when the, when the legislature takes this up, but I just wanted to advise you of that. Some cities are recommending and are doing that part of the city council be present and part still be available by Zoom. That is not for me to determine, that's for you all to determine. But currently, as long as I believe the KJW as well as the Helena World are on our line, so I believe that they have access, and we just have to ensure that the public knows of the Zoom meetings, the, the times and how to access, so we won't want to file a Freedom of Information Act. Also, you all voted to have them first and third. At some point, you may have to amend, notify the public when you're going back to, excuse me, city halls, in the event that COVID vaccine works effectively and we're able to go back into meetings. But I did want to state that for the record, because that's one of the things, been a healthy discussion the past two or three days with the municipal league and all the city attorneys. But I think the way we're doing it, since the Helena World is online as well as KJW's online and citizen online, but we must put it on our webpage, which Ms. Havitt has always assured to be doing. And I encourage you all, the city council members, so the public have great access on your individual Facebook pages. If you would post the link to say, hey, we're having a city council meeting, because we just want to make sure we're not violating the Freedom of Information Act in any way. With that, I yield to the mayor, I just want to give you all that to tell you that, that the safeguards expire. But as long as we give full and open access to the public as well as to the media, I believe we're, we're within the letter of the law.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Any questions for Mr. Valley? And for anybody listening, we, we do advertise on the city's website. I think it is the government tab. If I'm not mistaken, and you scroll down and it talk, and it has the city council meeting coordinates. I don't think they actually, I don't think they change. I think, I think they're pretty much the same Zoom link and all of that. And so that people can go, I think it's that you go to the main homepage, then you go to the government tab, if I'm not mistaken. Anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I just want to make sure that the public knows how to get on the page and how to attend our meetings so that we'll continue, as we continue to do this. Thank you.
You, you bet. Thank you. And, and this is probably a good opportunity to say that this afternoon, the governor announced that he would add first responders to the vaccine rollout. And just a little bit of public information, if it helps, the rollout on vaccines is categorized in one, two, and three. One being categorized further into one A, one B, and one C. One A has been all healthcare providers, including basically nursing home residents. He added today first responders to one A and said that the goal would be to get them immunized or vaccinated by the end of January. That, that's a big, that's a big news item. It just came out this afternoon. And it's based on, you know, this is a moving target, it's based on how much vaccine is available, how much gets distributed to the states, and then how the state then in turn distributes it. And so the announcement this afternoon is, is big news. So we hope to get our first responders, which I include, of course, the police and fire department, also some people in the water department in that category. And then the one B would be public, I guess, I don't know if it's public, and I don't know if there's a distinction between public and private, but anyway, KT12 educators. And I believe people who are over a certain age with pre-existing conditions. I don't want to say too much more because I'm afraid I'll get it wrong. But anyway, it's making the news tonight. It's, it is a big deal, and they're saying by the end of February, I think, on that one. So there is a news chain of COVID that's in the United States that's come out of England. So it's really very much a race against the clock to see how quickly we can get people vaccinated to achieve what they call herd immunity. And it's good news that the governor feels that we will have enough vaccines available by the end of January to get our first responders vaccinated. So we're gonna meet on that first thing in the morning to, and meet with the health department, state health department and others to see how we're gonna do that logistically and how that's actually gonna work. So I just thought that was a good segue, Mr. Valley, into, into that issue. And did we, anything else on that? Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on now to the regular agenda. And I'm not sure, I think this is Ms. Ramsey on the banking resolution. I'm not sure who I need to recognize on that.
Yes, sir, that's me. Each year, we are required to provide the banks that we utilize with a resolution approved by the city council that establishes the signatories for the city of Helena West Helena on checks, drafts, and other negotiable instruments for, and for other related purposes. Those signing for the city of Helena West Helena would be the mayor, the treasurer, the city clerk. And in case of an emergency, when a second signature is needed and there are two of the, of us out of town or unavailable, it would be a council member, Don Etherly, and deputy city clerk, Diane Tyler. I have prepared the same resolution that I do each year. I just need a motion to pass the resolution so I can get it to the banks.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Who made that motion, I'm sorry?
Mr. Franklin and Ms. Davis.
Ms. Franklin made a move, adoption of the banking resolution, and then find the officials in the city that are eligible for, or out, allowed to sign on the city's behalf. And Ms. Davis seconded the motion. You had a discussion or question? If not, call the roll.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward? Yes. Crockett?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Two passes. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the 2021 proposed budget, and Mr. Turner and for discussion on that.
Excuse me, before we go on, can I be sworn in? So like, this will be, my vote will be legal.
Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am. I'd love to do that. I'm gonna read it, and at the end, if you would just say, yes, I, Wanda Crockett, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of councilperson upon which I am now about to enter. My term begins January 2021 and ends December 2022.
I do.
Thank you.
We got everybody sworn in now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna move now into the 2021 budget discussion. And Mr. Turner, I guess you're recognized, but I think we're just open for discussion, right?
Yeah, we, I just like to bring to the council's attention that their, the law requires them to pass or, or adopt a budget by February 1st. So, and we've been in discussions since December 1st, 2020. And so, like I've said at the other meetings and the other workshops, I'm open to any discussions or any questions that they may have or comments that they may have, or how they would like to proceed with the budget. There are any changes that they would like to make.
I'm just gonna.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Turner. I was just gonna say, just open it for general discussion.
Well, I got some information earlier this week, and I maybe wanted a suggestion, whatever, about the wage for the new deputy directors at 45, and I think that that is a good starting place for us. And it was, I think it was sent out in the information that Derek sent us.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, well, I, I added that to the, to the budget, I think, last week. And, uh, but I haven't heard about any other changes that anyone would, wanted to make. Or if anybody disagreed, well, with, uh.
Well, I supported sign off on that change.
Okay.
I'm with you, Ms. Ford. And I, and I have something, well, uh, due to the minimum wage changes, I see a lot of our employees who are, have been with the city 20-plus years, are just at $10.23, are we gonna give the dollar and put them up 23 cents ahead of the people who are just getting hired? How are we gonna fix that? That we have people who worked for the city for 20 years, and they're just still at $10. Now that the minimum wage is in effect, how are we gonna, how are the mayor, are there any changes? He used to turn out, instead of keeping them so far behind. Because it, that's, that's my thing, you know, you got people who have been here 20 years, and some of them are just making $10.23. But now that the minimum wage is coming to pay, are you gonna, are you gonna do the COLA and get in a cost delivery raise and, and the minimum wage together to bump them up? Just like the water department, a lot of departments who people are just, just now getting, they're making $9,000 plus, they're gonna move to $11,000, or they're making $10,000 or the K10. We need to have a workshop some, discuss, see, popping with big stuff, employees who've been with us for 20 years. For the first year, they're only making $10.23. Yeah. I think it's hard. This is about many, many, many for what is your value? Uh, the problem here, what are your evaluation process? Are you evaluating these people to see if there's if there's a growth or whatever to compensate them? Uh, we started asking to do jobs, but we can ask other people to get high dollar raises and people who are essential to the city, who are very essential to the city, and they are needed as well. Uh, I I'll leave that to you. But that's just my thought, people who are making ten dollars right now and building cities for twenty plus years. At at this point, I'm not asking, we can make that change, uh, the council, but we can make that change in the workshop. And I I would like, and I will do what 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 you need to do to make that change. Make sure those employees who are not getting the eleven dollars or whatever we do to make sure that they're compensated due to the new minimum wage, the eleven dollars, the eleven dollars. Uh, I I'll, in the workshop, I I'll make sure that we get that tip in here. But that was just to put a
You're kind of breaking up.
But we now you to the city.
I think we got to just.
That's just me. I've asked over and over again to have an evaluation process where the department head.
I think I think, um, we got to just to your question, you've been breaking up on us a little bit, but uh, yeah, of course, January first, uh, per state law, paid by city tax dollars, but mandated by state, uh, referendum is the minimum wage is eleven dollars an hour. And yes, we have, um, submitted, um, the, uh, suggestion on the water department. Of course, you know, I've supported, um, raises for the water department almost since I've been mayor. Um, and I continue to support them. We have now linked them to uh, certifications and licenses, which is something I think the council has expressed in the past, and I think it's a an excellent point, you know, listen to them. So we have, we're suggesting that, uh, that the promotions and and raises beyond the eleven dollars be tied to additional certifications and licenses in the water department. As far as, uh, outside the water department, um, Mr. Turner, I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh, uh, yield to you here in a second. The, you know, the big issue is always, uh, what can we afford to do? And I do agree that, uh, given the mandatory eleven dollar minimum wage increase, then you have others who are above the minimum wage, have worked there longer, that deserve, um, consideration for raises. That process has been, um, from the employee to their supervisor and then ultimately to me and to the council. Um, if if it's recommended and if and if we can afford it. And so I think Mr. Turner has said in the past that we would love to do a one dollar uh, an hour raise for all employees, but we can't, we just can't afford it. Having said that, I'm gonna yield to Mr. Turner.
I mean, there's no more to say than that. I mean, the, it's just cost prohibitive right now to give everybody a dollar increase. And, uh, the thing about the minimum wage increase is that, you know, the 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 law requires us to increase our expenses, but they don't give us, I mean, we so, but we're not mandated to increase any fees that we charge. We have to do that on our own. I can say for any additional, uh, revenues that may be needed to co- to 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 cover any increase. We may have to go up on some fees or taxes or whatever we need, uh, to do to increase our revenues. But right now, revenues, uh, you have a finite amount, uh, amount of revenues and we have increasing amount of payroll. So, I mean, there's so much you can do. Uh, there may be need, there there obviously, there needs to be some structural change to, uh, a payroll structure, but it all has to be within, uh, the an amount that the city can afford to do.
Ms. Turner?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know about how many people, uh, Mr. Franklin was going back to what he was saying about the number of people that were, um, that had worked twenty plus years that were making ten dollars or under ten dollars an hour or at ten dollars an hour? About how many people?
No, no, ma'am. I don't have any idea. How many people that will be over twenty years? I I I don't know.
That's making that kind of money?
Uh, no, uh, I wouldn't know.
Thanks so much, Mrs. Dan.
I guess I can't understand what you're saying. I guess I should have asked you. Maybe you've done the research on it. We can't understand you. I can't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm connecting bad. But the question was, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, it it may be probably ten or fifteen people, uh, but this is my whole thing about this. When 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 they say we don't know or we, uh, you if you know your employees, if you know your city, each employee is valued and should be acknowledged. Uh, I'm not, I'm not knocking anybody, but this is the way I feel. When a councilperson or or anybody can see that we can go to bat to give folks all these big raises, everybody, you know, even in in the new proposed budget, we give people eight thousand dollar raise, ten thousand dollar raise, twenty thousand dollar raise, whatever the case may be. Then we'll come, then the administration will come back and say, or the people around, we gotta raise fees. But if you could give one person eight thousand now, surely you can give another person a dollar, ten cents, fifty cents, if there was an evaluation chart did from the department head to the mayor, to the city council, we could have worked something out. But then, but then these numbers get thrown out to the city council. We got, the city council always get blamed for something. But I'm looking at these people who are essential to the city of Helena, West Helena, who get out here day to day. The people at Walmart is a billion dollar company, so I I shouldn't compare them to us. But at some point, we, the administration and the council, what the council does, have to value all employees from the water department to the street department, to the sanitation, to all to law enforcement, and to the 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 fire department, all the landfill, all about departments should be acknowledged. But we know we strapped for cash, but just like, just like we can do a lot of other things, I think that we should sit down, the treasurer, the mayor, the mayor, the treasurer, I would hope to get together and work and comb through those employees and see. If you can't give them a raise, at least give them employee of the month, some kind of re- the Daily World is on the call. Give them some kind of recognition to let them know we appreciate them and we do, we can do better, we can give. But we've raised the water fees, we've increased sanitation fees. Yes, th- th- those are curbing some of our expenses. But we we have to start, the administration has to start looking at, how can we take care of our employees to keep these people? We have people leaving who want to come back, that the administration says, no, I don't want you back. We have people who are qualified to do jobs that get looked over. But the whole thing of it is, if you treat a person good, they want to work. Okay, how bad the, how how bad the circumstances? You have to treat people well.
Mr. Turner, you have anything?
Uh, no, uh, to answer that or to a part of that, uh, comment that he was making was that, uh, we we, I I feel that we have addressed giving employees raises, that the state has addressed give a portion of the employees raises by increasing the minimum wage. And, uh, we've addressed giving the remainder of the 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 city employees, uh, increased, uh, uh, an increase in the cost of living. So we we are trying to a- address it as much as we can. But like I said before, we all have a limited amount of resource. So so those items have been addressed. Like I said, state mandate, minimum wage increase, we we we're complying with that. And everyone else that doesn't get that minimum wage increase, we're, uh, proposing that they get a three percent cost of living. So there 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 are, there are raises that we're putting on the table. So if the, this doesn't, or anybody on the council just doesn't agree with the amount, that's that's another issue.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would suggest, if you would, sir, uh, get with the department heads of each department and ask them for their department recommendations of the employees. They know each employee very well in their department and they should, uh, come to you and make recommendations, I think. Uh, but for us to try to dictate for the entire city, uh, each individual, uh, we don't know their work habits and uh, how valuable they are to the city. And there are some more valuable than others, I'm sure. But, uh, I would recommend that you get with the, uh, department heads and get their input, uh, and we go from there. I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Franklin, uh, we we have a lot of valuable employees. We certainly need to take care of these people. And we, if we've got people been with us twenty years just making minimum wage, we need to do better than that, really. Uh, we need to talk to the department heads about. I I don't, I I can't comprehend that we got very many like that, but twenty years with the city and only making minimum wage. Uh, I I I agree with Mr. Franklin. We certainly need to do something more than that. So I, that's my recommendation and suggestion that, uh, you as mayor get with the department heads. Because they know their employees better than any one of us would know them.
And Mr. St. Clement, I I I agree with you, but to a certain extent, I I'm not trying to be a dictator. If you don't make it knowledgeable to them, they don't acknowledge. You look in this proposed budget and you look at how many people that are asking for, that they're recommended to get raises and you look at the fact that you got somebody who is making not even making minimum wage and you could say, oh, we want to give this person this kind of money, you want to take this to that. You got, e- even look at it. You even got people here for ten years that hadn't even made the eleven dollars. So I I'm not, I agree with you, uh, uh, to the part of dictating. I'm not trying to dictate anybody's salary. I'm bringing it to the floor. So the public and 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 bring to the attention of the administration, because I'm pretty sure that if the mayor signs checks, uh, the on your, on your check stuff is the rate of pay, showing you what you are getting paid an hour. I'm not saying you should, if you're gonna sign the check, you could see each department, if you sign off on the checks, each department that you got, John Doe makes ten dollars an hour. It doesn't tell you how long he's been there, but I'm pretty sure that each employee i- i- is valued to this city because each one of them have bring different skills to the community. But they could have left the city and went somewhere else, but they chose to stay with us. And I value that because if you can dedicate yourself for twenty years to a city and only getting paid ten dollars, that you you, there was no n- no room for growth or anything else. You just got the ten dollars. You came to work faithfully. Through sickness, through health, through the tragedy and family, you came to work. That should be in it. And I've been saying this since I've been here for the past ten years. I've been saying we need to have the the department, get some kind of form that the department head evaluate their employees. You got a ninety days, that when they get there after ninety days, they come back to the council for a raise. Well, you should have a yearly performance check to see how, e- even we need better time clocks. Just make sure people are, we need to have a policy set in place. If you're seven minutes late, that's a point, half a point. If you call in on a holiday, we need to, we need to run it as a business and start running as a friendship train. You my friend, I want to give you ten thousand dollars. That's what, that's what the administration has, m- many of, not just this one, but many of them. You all know as well, as far as I know, many administrations come in, they wanna, I I'm gonna take care of this person, get him a a five thousand dollar raise, I'm gonna give him this. So that's why we can't afford to give our employees regular hours, employees anything, because we're too busy. As my grandma said, fattening the frog for the snake.
Okay, um, I think the Department Director, Bobby Jones, did you raise your hand and ask to be recognized?
Uh, yes, sir. Now, you mentioned evaluation, Mr. Franklin. I mean, we we have done that upon the Arnold administration, uh, Jay administration, and we didn't done it what since Kevin been here. And still, y'all got the last say so, man. I mean, is it gonna make a difference if we do it this year?
Mrs. Jones, if if that's the case, have you been doing evaluations since Arnold Willis administration?
Yes, sir.
The council, the 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 mayor, once the mayor sees that and say, hey, we have these employees who have, th- th- the department head, Bobby Jones, uh, Oscar Hoskins, whoever that department head is, once the mayor say, hey, I got a recommendation that, Mr. Jones, uh, we did this evaluation and he wants to take, uh, Mary Kay up ten cents more an hour because her performance, a yearly evaluation would do good to at least that you would keep the people stagnant at one, at one price for twenty years. So if you, if you've done your job on that, then it goes to the mayor. If the mayor dropped the ball, it doesn't hand it to the city council, hey, listen, these are the recommendations I've gotten. And I think I want to s- see what you, what your action is, either it'll be action or no action. That's the way that process supposed to work. If you, if you pass the torch to him, he should run it to us. Then we decide as a body. Now, this is one person, this is just me speaking, but as a body, hey, the ma- the the department head has made this recommendation, the person has not been laid. They they have exceeded, uh, beyond the expectation of the department head, it's Bobby Jones. They have did, met the requirements and doing everything. And we're financially stable at the time. Yes, we should, yes, the mayor should pass to us. And then we should say, hey, it's something good to look at. And if your department head is cutting overtime and doing all the things it needs to do, if you're cutting overtime, why can't you not do an evaluation to give your people some money?
Well, my department have cut back, Mr. Franklin.
And I understand it, Mr. Jones. Right, and I understand it, but but it shouldn't be penalized for you. And not to cut you off, it shouldn't be penalized for other departments where people people use overtime for raises. And I'm not trying to step on anybody's skin, but
What about getting a certain amount for each department, like rate, a certain amount of money for, you just in case, you know, when the department head want to go to the mayor and request or come in front of the council. I mean, like Don said, if you put it in the budget, we should not always come in front of the council to ask to give this out again. I mean, we'd have done that so many years, man. It, we have money in the budget for certain employees, but we still got to come back and request to get that money.
What what, that's, and that's something, I'm glad you brought that. Th- this is the time now, it's, it, the council is gonna look at this budget and probably dissect this budget to make sure that we can get, make sure our employees are taken care, we're we're not, we're not trying, we're not trying to waste or spend. We have to start v- v- valuing our employees. And yes, the 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 city is huge. We got less employees we did twenty years ago, but what we want to do is make sure our employees, a- as we pay you, ru- run that ball to make sure the city looks good. Make sure you clean, it makes you doing your part. If the city council and the mayor and administration is taking care of employees, they should be taking care of the city from the top to the bottom, all of us. Because if the city is giving out this money, you always hear people say taxpayers' dollars, taxpayers' dollars. Well, yes, they're taxpayers' dollars. But now is the time to say, listen, let's clean this up. E- that, e- even with 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 our our shopyards and all this stuff, employees have to do a job, but they wouldn't mind coming in if they got paid a a decent wages to take care of the shopyard and all this stuff. We paying somebody right now over there to clean up some bricks. That 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 five thousand dollars we're paying to clean up some bricks could be part of somebody's salary that could have said, hey, listen, uh, it it's cold outside, but hey, before the grass season get cut, I can let my men go over there and get their shopyard cleaned up. Make sure they stack and wrap the them bricks.
Okay, well, well, I'm glad to hear you say that. Well, I'd have added, I'd have gave my my guys more work right now, four four, and they ain't got nothing. Mr. Franklin.
What, what?
I mean, we, all training guys, they they doing two and three jobs and still to this day, I can't get my guys a raise and I have fought for these guys. I mean, y'all have done a little bit in the past, which I do appreciate. But now my department is just as important as any other department. I come and try to fight for my guys. I mean, pretty much every six months, I come and ask for a raise for my guys. And I think I only got it one time.
Well, well, I understand, Mrs. Jones, but e- even with your guys, even you've took on more responsibility. We've ge- we've we've given twenty, I'm, in in the past two years, twenty thousand dollars to make sure that you can function with 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 these dual roles. So then, so we have, then we have to look at how, as as I said before, we're budget neutral. Look at, look at the people you lost in your, in in the departments you took in. Oscar Hoskins, that's that's forty five thousand dollars. We gave you part of that salary. That, that's, some of that money should have trickled down to the employees, as I said before. If 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 we're not gonna hire anybody like Bob Gasson's position, all those positions that we have, if people who are leaving, who are, who are top heavy, making a decent salary, and they don't, if we, if you're gonna be a public work or whatever you are, that that money should trickle down to those employees. If we're not gonna hire anybody and give more responsibility so they can function like, hey, you ask for, you ask for the raise, we're giv- giving it to you. Here's your responsibility and we expect it to be done. I don't want to talk like that because I I'm I'm not day to day operation. That's stepping over the mayor. The mayor should, once he, once he had that conversation with those, with those employees and you are, comes back to the body and say, hey, this is what I would like to see, then yes, I I I'll give it. But I, we we, and we we have to be a- a- so it still has to be a little frugal with our money. But if people are, we're not hiring people in positions like Oscar position. Go and look at Jody's position in the water department. Look at Benzine positioning the water department. That's why COVID has taken a lot of things from us, from sitting down in a meeting, discussing face to face on real issues. So these Zoom calls get a little longer and I'm not trying to take over, but the Zoom calls get a little longer and sometimes people forget. But my thing right now is back to the basics of it, that we have employees that are not making the right, the the the, a decent amount of money, who yet come to work every day. And I think if we can give a person ten and fifteen thousand dollars or eight thousand dollars or six thousand, whatever the case may be.
Well, I I I got three positions I ain't feeling right now. And I I think if if you can give my guys a dollar or another dollar raise now, I keep those positions, you know, I I wouldn't fill them, you know, if you can go ahead and help them out.
What, what?
I will feel would be to see their position.
I I understand.
I can cut back a whole lot in my department, Mr. Franklin.
Mrs. Jones, I understand, but 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 we we, we would have to do, we would have to do it in a budget workshop setting. This is not the setting to do it. I don't want to overstep the mayor. I I'm just saying, w- w- you can make your recommendations and we can look at that during the budget workshop. We, you have to sit down with the treasurer, let the treasurer know what you're gonna do, and he can present that to us. I I'm not trying to take up too much of the time on the call because the mayor has other things that he want to talk about. But you can get with, you can get with Ms. Ramsey and let her know and and put it on the next agenda and talk with Derek. Get your numbers together and we'll be, I I, me and the body, I'm pretty, I can't speak for everybody, but I'm pretty sure that they look at everything else. We we all work together. The council, this council we got, we look at it together. So I I I'm gonna give it back to the mayor, Mrs. Jones. I appreciate you for your experience. I don't want to.
I have something I'd like to say, uh, about evaluations. I think that we should have annual evaluations. They should become a part of the employee's personnel file. Think it should document what they do, the achievements that they made, any areas in which they are challenged. I think that we should have fair evaluations based on merit. Everybody can't make, get the same amount of raise because they don't do the same.
That's true. That's true.
A job. This is the only place I know people, ah, we won't give everybody two dollars. You can, it should be based on their job, what they do, the, uh, how they go beyond, uh, to do. And it, that's, that's how it's based. I, this is the only place I know where everybody come and they get two dollars, whatever, which equates to about four thousand dollars a year. We have to look at it, but I think that we should have a written evaluation. It should be done annually. And it should be fair and based on merit. That's all I want to say.
Um, I I I need to throw in a comment at this point. We we're talking about a group of people at a certain amount of pay increase in an abstract fashion. When in fact, there's a certain number of people that we're talking about and it has a certain budget impact. And I think it's pointless at this point to go back and forth on this issue. And I think it's pointless at this point to go back and forth on this issue until we know how many people we're talking about and how it impacts the budget, so we can determine whether or not it's there. So what, what I would suggest is, if Mr. Franklin knows how many, because I don't know how many people we're talking about and how it impacts the budget. You get with the treasurer, have him to, to write up what it would cost and how it would impact this budget so that we know what kind of numbers we're talking about, because otherwise, we, I, I don't know whether we have it, don't have it. We have to move some stuff around, uh, adjust here, adjust there. So let's first figure out how many people we're talking about, what departments they come from, uh, what positions at least we're talking about, and what the budget impact is, and then we can further discuss it, and whether it's viable or not.
Well, I think he said about twenty, well, he can get ready to add to it, because I got my department too.
Right, but what I'm saying is, eh, eh, from a budget to, because we're trying to adopt the budget, we need to know which positions and which departments we're talking about, and what it's gonna, you know, how it's gonna impact the bottom line, twenty twenty-one.
I, I, I have my list together.
Thank you, Mr. Astrale, that's correct, I agree. Let's move on.
Okay, well, let, let me just say, um, that after two years of, um, being very diligent with our finances, the administration and council can be really proud, I think. We have paid our bills and balanced our budget, not one, but now two years in a row. And because of that, we've been able to do three things that a lot of cities have not been able to do, and you should be proud of that, and we are the, and our list knows that we are one of the poorest counties in, not just this state, but in the nation, one of the poorest county, Lee County beats us, then it's Phillips County and then Newton County. We are one of the poorest counties in the nation. We have undergone, and I don't need to tell anybody on this call, historic level of economic problems, even while our, we watched the rest of the country go through amazing, uh, wealth. Uh, but still, as much as I wish we could pay people what they are truly worth, we are limited by what we actually have. And we, many, most cities, we, we have a list from the municipal, most cities did not give uh, their employees a pandemic payment. Most cities did not do that. The city of Little Rock gave a five hundred dollar pandemic payment. We were able to give a larger payment, um, we pay a hundred percent of our employees' health insurance. And not only are we, um, making room in our budget for the minimum wage increase for the second time this year, and, and I'm, I approve of that increase, I voted for that increase, and I have a small business. Uh, I know the issues, but I voted for it because it is fair, it is right. And, but it comes out of city money, it still comes out of the same pot, we don't get money from the state to pay it. At the same time, it's not fair for people who are above minimum wage barely, who've been here longer. Uh, and yet, and so, we're giving them a three percent COLA. Three percent because we wanna be able to actually pay it and not roll it back like we have had to do in the past. So because of our financial stewardship, we're able to do those three things. And those are the three very important things that we're able to do in one of the poorest cities in America. We wish I could, we could do more, um, that's what we're doing for everybody. On top of that, there are employees who are frankly, uh, doing things and taking over more work for relatively less pay, so that we can do those things. And yes, they deserve a raise, and those are in the budget. And I hope that we ultimately approve those things, because not only are they budget nu- neutral, but they save us money, and those individuals are being paid more to do more. But they're still saving us money overall to make it possible for us to pay for that COLA. So, um, there are two issues here, one is what's fair to the individual and what's fair to the group as a whole. We're giving the three percent COLA, a minimum wage increase, we're paying a hundred percent of our health insurance, and we gave them what I would argue is a, um, a robust pandemic payment compared to other cities. Um, I think that's something that we should be proud of, and it's only possible because we have been good stewards the last two years. I haven't said that, I'm gonna shut up and, and move on uh, to the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh, vehicles. And I'm not exactly sure, Chief Smith, are you on the call?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, so, um, I'll just briefly introduce it, our lease that I think began, uh, in twenty sixteen, if I'm not mistaken, has been paid up for a few months now. Uh, so we have requested from a state contract, a couple of proposals uh, that allow us to, um, replace our existing patrol cars with newer patrol car, cars, and, uh, do so within our budget. Um, you know, it's no, I'm sure all council people, including, uh, a- as well as the mayor and others, have received concerns about the amount of patrolling that we do in the city. Uh, we've substantially increased the amount of patrolling, uh, at least since I've been here. And yet, our, our, our cars are frankly on their last leg, and, um, so we have paid off in honor of that last lease, and so this would replace that lease. Haven't said that, I'm going to recognize Chief Smith and also, uh, Mr. Turner too.
Once again, good evening, this is Chief Smith, Oklahoma Police Department, uh, City Council. I have, uh, wanna present a proposal in regards to a state contract pricing from Smart Ford, which is in Whitehall, Arkansas. We started looking at vehicles, our current fleet, right now, we have two cars out of service, our vehicles. We're spending approximately about twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars a month to, uh, keep those vehicles in, uh, rotation due to the fact those vehicles are not police interceptive vehicles. Those vehicles, uh, mo- most of our maintenance problems have been rotors, uh, brakes, tires, and sometimes vehicle overheating. So we started looking at the, uh, vehicles, what can handle day-to-day operations, because these vehicles are constantly moving twenty-four hours a day, that's gonna get us the bang for our buck. So we're looking at police interceptors, we had two, uh, contract bids, state contract pricing on those. Uh, we looked at, uh, company that we have, uh, used in the past. Right now, at currently time, we have two vehicles units that are out of service. Uh, this week, we've had an officer, that officer was parked in the middle of the highway, blocking traffic with lights on, individual came through there and struck the vehicle. Officer is currently out on OJI, and that vehicle has looked like it's gonna be towed. The second vehicle was involving the on-duty shooting of Officer Travis Wallace, and we have taken that vehicle out of service due to the fact that vehicle would be used in, as evidence, and also, we just taken out of service due to the respect for Officer Wallace himself and for the Oklahoma West Coast Police Department. The bid that we, we proposing tonight is on twenty, twenty-one Ford PI SUVs. We've had two pricings, those pricings are, um, the first one are hybrid vehicles. I know you've spoken in the past about in regards to, uh, fuel efficiency vehicles, that's gonna cut back on fuel, but also give us the, uh, the opportunity to do day-to-day twenty-four hour work, these vehicles are moving. These vehicles are SUVs, they are on the police interceptor chassis. Uh, the frames are made of all these vehicles for day-to-day operation and based off the terrain that we have in, uh, our, in the Delta itself. And so on the hybrid vehicles, which this allows us fuel efficiency, wh- which you actually getting per, uh, miles per gallon on the hybrids are, for the city is twenty-seven miles per gallon on Highway twenty-nine. That proposal, with all the bells and whistles, and when I say that, the logistics there, added to the price of the vehicle comes with inside lighting, the lighting, the striping of the vehicle, the cages that's inside for the protection of the detainee, also cameras, the camera system is for the front, the front of the vehicle and the rear of the vehicle, which has the capabilities to show transparency for what our officers are doing daily, their daily operation, uh, the video system inside the vehicle, and also the lighting, which we're going to go into slick tops, and when I say slick tops, roll bars due to the welding conditions and everything, we're putting the lights inside the vehicle all the way around for protection of the officers, and hopefully, we don't have a situation like we had last week where officer sitting in the, uh, drive and inside the, uh, interstate blocking traffic, and somebody come through there and hit him and causing damage to the vehicle or the officer. The total pricing for ten vehicles, these are Ford Expos twenty-twenty-one hybrids, the total price for ten vehicles, that's with the striping, uh, four key fobs, spotlights, camera system and everything, we're looking at a total of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's gives us a price of total for each vehicle, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. If we go with the non-hybrid vehicles, which still gives up the gas mileage, that's gonna give us probably miles per gallon, that's for the city, is twenty-three miles, uh, per gallon for a vehicle, and also for the highway is twenty-five, uh, hundred, excuse me, twenty-five miles per gallon for those vehicles. We're looking at a deduction of the, uh, to the four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That gives us a total price of forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cent per vehicle. These vehicles have already been designed, outfitting of it, so what you're getting is the base price per vehicle along with all the equipment, camera system, and also we got the bumper-to-bumper warranty, which the warranty goes up for the Ford itself, for these interceptors, up to fifty thousand miles. Uh, we can get an additional, uh, warranty if needed to be added to these vehicles. These are all-wheel-drive vehicles, they're not V-eights, because we don't want officers going and driving fast and going up in someone's house or building like that, these are going to be V-six hybrids. Uh, if we go with the hybrid package or the V-six itself. Uh, the total price for everything, which I've already given, we have to come up with a decision if we wanna go with the hybrid option, because of, of the boulder and the gas savings, which we can pay for now, pay for later. Like I said, phase one on hybrids is forty-four, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's, that brings us a total of forty-four thousand, give and take forty-five thousand dollars per vehicle. The non-hybrid steel twenty-twenty-one Ford Expos is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, wh- which gives us a total of forty-two, uh, thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars per vehicle. All of this, if, if the city council approves this, it would take us pro- approximately five months before we get the vehicles, like I said, all our vehicles are paid off. Right now, the total cost that we're paying for our monthly, uh, note is about five thousand dollars, which this will only increase about a thousand dollars more a month, bringing us a total of six thousand dollars. Uh, I know we have talked about buying vehicles all at one time, every five years, every three years, which I would get with Ms. Ramsey and Mr. Turner, and trying to find out a way that we can get a leasing package or some type of, uh, agreement with the finance company, or what's some way we can do something where we actually get new cars, at least one or two new cars every two to three years, to try to keep in rotation, because it makes no sense, every five years, you buy a new fleet of vehicles. And we need to try to look at the details of that. But we have gotten this proposal, we, the other proposal is from a, uh, organization, a vehicle organization out of Indianapolis. Got that information from the municipal league, uh, it's the transport of the vehicles, the equipment and everything, it's gonna cost us a little bit more. So we wanna try to keep the money inside of Arkansas, we've already dealt with these individuals, uh, buying cars in the past. And I'm just asking the city council to review, and if you have any questions about this, these vehicles, we would like to move forward and get the approval of the city council to go ahead and purchase. For us, the hybrid vehicles, we're just looking at gas savings, for us, the maintenance on the hybrid, it's a little bit more expensive, uh, per se from vehicles who are not, which is, don't have the hybrid capacity. We're looking at fuel efficiency, we're looking at dependability, these vehicles running twenty-four hours a day, and looking at the package which we don't have right now with our vehicles. Like I said, all our vehicles are up and running, minus the two vehicles that are out of service, and we just asking city council approve that tonight, and we can go through any questions or comments anyone have in regards to these vehicles, and I'll give it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, tha- thank you, Chief, and, uh, Mr. Turner. Ray Johnson, you see, if you have any comments about it?
No, uh, I think that the, the chief, uh, said everything that needed to be said. The only difference is, I think he was slightly, I think he, he misspoke, uh, when he said it would be only six thousand dollars. I mean, obviously, if it's a thousand dollars a month, so I think he just misspoke. But it's, it's a little bit higher than that, and I did my calculations in, in the budget. Uh, so, um, it'll be an eighteen thousand dollar difference in the annual, annually, in the payments that we make. He's correct, we do make about, the payments we currently make are five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. These payments would be six thousand, uh, six hundred, six thousand, seven hundred, so it'd be a little, little, over a thousand dollars a month more, but it, uh, it comes to, uh, approximately, and like, I'm only dealing with estimates right now. So it's approximately eighteen thousand dollars more, uh, a year. Uh, but I, I think it's well worth it having the police cars that are, that are made to be police cars instead of just buying regular cars and just putting strikers on them.
And excuse me, Mayor and Mr. Turner, I don't think I've misspoken on everything, this information was given by you. I just wanna refer to the fact that it wouldn't cost us any more than what we've already paid. Our vehicles are already paid off, you just gave the same numbers, probably I just said it would totally different, but I want the council to know that it's not gonna cost us just as much, but these vehicles will be more efficient. And being through the situation that we've been through for twenty-twenty, uh, boosting morale in our department of the loss of our officer, and I'm not lying, whining just myself on that, but police officers, we love new equipment, kind of boost morale. It's not only that, it, it is a good recruiting tool as well of getting these type of vehicles, and I'm open to any suggestion from anybody from the council, if you can just, anything that we can do a little bit better, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, the only thing I would add to that, because it made an impression on me, is, you know, most of us are used to, you know, we find a car in a lot, we fall in love with it, we decide to buy it, take it home. Uh, in this case, it's about a five months is what the, what they told me, it's gonna be about a five-month lead time, so if you approve this tonight, and, you know, sometime before Friday or next week, we, we, uh, pull the trigger, as they say, uh, to get these, then it was still gonna be about five months before we actually see them. So it is a timely issue, we have a lot of, um, problems with our current fleet. Uh, the other thing on cost, I would say, is that, um, the more, the newer, more modern fleet is more fuel-efficient and cheaper on maintenance. And one of the, the challenges that we have on an ongoing operating basis, and that's really true for the whole city, but, um, is, is maintenance costs and fuel costs. We want them, and I think our citizens want them patrolling more. Uh, and we wanna do that, that creates a lot more wear and tear on the vehicle. Uh, and we wanna do that. That creates a lot more wear and tear on the vehicle, a lot more fuel costs, a lot more maintenance costs. So having better, uh more efficient, fuel, fuel efficient and um more, and newer, more modern um engines on it will, I think, ultimately save money um for our fleet. But that's all I was gonna add to that. So I'm gonna open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Andre Vala for the record, uh, one thing we would also need the information as a city council, we would need the information regarding the uh I don't know who's lying on the ring it, but regarding the the lease payment, unless you're saying you're gonna pay it cash, uh, we would need the information regarding the lease payment agreement. I need to review that before the council does it. I know there's a state contract that you're doing it at the level. So there's not a competitive bidding issue. The issue would be just make sure we approve the terms of of the of the contract. Uh, but with that, I yield, and also Mr. Turner, as you're familiar with the lawsuit that's going on regarding Chris to Chris Solutions, you would need to apply that uh the feasibility was making a payment if you uh and the mayor and you're both aware, I wasn't talking about on that issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was alluding to earlier, that the the payments are only a thousand dollars more a month. And so I had already budgeted for, so there 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 wouldn't be, oh, but you mean as far as the the total on that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but uh I think we would, I think because we would be financing them within a four-year, we would be financing them within a four-year period, I believe. I mean, maybe you can add a little bit.
Yes, sir, but remember the specific question in that lawsuit, it's just, just, just something simple. Are you all just received the pending money you didn't spend at all? The question would be, it's your opinion. Uh, if you were forced to, if you had to, could you pay this all off a year if you so chose? And that's, that's the legal question, if you remember that that lawsuit.
In what year? Any, any year? No, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't even want to. That's why we would find.
No, 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 no. No, 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 I went talking about uh you financed, I was just saying specifically is your opinion that we could, if we had to, you're not trying to, if you had to, you could pay it all off this year if you had to.
Yeah, this year, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I didn't understand. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's not your recommendation.
No.
Uh, but but we just wanna be consistent, so so we can observe that, that you were stating that on the record. That's, that's all I was saying.
Yeah.
If had to.
I mean, I would, I would concur with that. If we had to, we wouldn't want to.
Right, 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 but 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 uh you're, you're familiar with the facts, Mayor, and I was just trying to establish that he said that on the record.
Yes. I would say on the record is um, you know, because of some hard decisions, we've gotten ourselves in a better financial position, so we can do these things. And so we could do that, whereas I don't know that we, I don't know, I don't think we could have done it in twenty nineteen because we already.
If we.
Well.
I'm, I'm, that's not, that's.
As it is in twenty twenty-one.
Right, it's not my intent to mitigate that. It was just to make a record for
No, you're right.
To maintain that public, publicly for for, I must turn it to be able to say that to the city council if you so chose about that. Now, the one thing about it is I think it's a good thing for us to renew, to to get new vehicles every three to five years. Uh, in the past, we've done things, we've done one with Cruises Association going way back for consolidation. I think we did a second with them, but we've been doing um uh government, I can't think of the lease company, but this Ms. Ramsey, where, where you've been doing the the short-term leases uh with those, and that's probably the the thing we would, we would do here. And it doesn't require a competitive bidding because it is at the state contract price. Uh, that's, that's non-negotiable, but the only question the council had to prove is the actual terms of the agreement and the agreement itself, and I'll review that as soon as the council gives the go-ahead to go ahead and do it so that we can get that done. So tonight, what we would need you to do is authorize the mayor to go out and that you, you're agreeing that you're gonna get the vehicles, but the mayor has to find the short-term finance and then come back if you prove the short-term finance and at the next meeting if we can have it by then. Ms. Ramsey, you think you can have it by then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a couple of questions.
Uh, Mr. Franklin.
You know, since, since we in this pandemic, uh ha- ha- have, have you all considered looking at some options to see are there any other monies out there that would help us get some cars? The, the, to pay a, a, kind of down payment on it to, to make it easy on us? Talking about employees, right? And here we putting the cart before the horse. That's just my thing. Uh, it's, we gotta look at some things.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia. Mr. Mayor. Well. I wanted to say something, but I.
Mr. St. Columbia, I believe you have the floor. Just go ahead and speak while the mayor's waiting to get his connection back.
Oh, okay. Uh, uh, I had uh one question I wanted to ask. These are new cars. Is that correct? They have a new car warranty? And how long is that warranty?
T. Smith, I believe he's the right question to you.
Uh, yes, sir. These vehicles are have the uh fifty thousand mile warranty, the original factory warranty, bumper to bumper. Also the warranty in involving the uh equipment, police packages as well. They are also under warranty as well, for us the lighting, the uh camera system itself. So all, all the above have the warranty too. We address the uh issue that I know Ms. Franklin, Mr. Franklin said something about to kind of help out on the money part. I, I don't have a problem writing a USDA grant again to try to offset some of the costs, but main thing is to look at the matching, but that still comes into play about the leasing and uh how how we're gonna look at the leasing part as well, because I know USDA uh requires a certain type of matching. They give approximately about thirty-five percent uh towards the total cost of uh what type of uh equipment that we're buying. That, that includes vehicles itself.
Uh, T. Smith, Andre Vala, do you, do you have a figure as to once you get the cars, uh the, the cost of equipping all these vehicles, or is that including the numbers you're giving?
Yes, sir. That includes everything. Um, the, the total cost that I got is already broke, broke down. I don't know if Ms. Ramsey, I follow back up with her today to make sure everybody got a copy of it. I know probably one or two individuals on the council may have had this information. But this is the total cost of the vehicle along with all the striping and all the uh police equipment itself, including the camera system inside the vehicle.
And again, Andre Vala, one other question. Will, will all the vehicles have cameras or just a proportion of them?
No, sir. All the vehicles will have cameras. All ten vehicles will have the cameras, the same package, same warranties, everything. All of this and all, once again, the total price per vehicle includes the uh the equipment, the camera system, and also the graphics on the vehicles as well.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, I, I understand. I recently bought a new car myself because my other car was going out. The transmission was about to fall out of the car. You gotta get something before you uh get too desperate, so, and I know the cars we have are wearing out. Some of them are not even running right now, and we're gonna have to replace these cars. All we need to do for tonight is just uh approve and move forward with this project. Is that correct? Mr. Mayor.
So you, you, you're authorizing the ma- the mayor and and the city treasurer to go forward with it as well? Yes, and then we've got to bring back the contract for your, for your approval and and I admit, I failed to mention the chief of police, but yes, you, you're authorized to go forward with it.
Okay, that's what I thought. I, I, I'd make a motion that we move forward on this and authorize the mayor and the treasurer and the council to move forward on this project, because it's gonna take five months to get the cars anyway. And we've got to get the financing done, so I make a motion that we move forward on this uh project. Whatever necessary to make the purchase of, of handling it.
It's just St. Columbia moves that we move forward on the acquisition of the cars for the police department. Is there a second? Second on the motion to move forward to purchase the cars for the, the uh replacement cars for the police department. Okay, I don't hear a second. Okay, uh, going forward, I guess, uh, move on. Then I guess, Vala will, will proceed with the contract uh issue and put that on the next agenda. And in the meantime, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I, I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead. Hello? Go, go ahead. I'm sorry. I, we can't hear you.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay, for, for Mr. Turner, um, they, they, the discussion was about monthly figures and how much it would cost uh, uh, the total increase in cost annually. But I'm looking at the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget and I'm trying, I wanna make sure that I'm looking at the same expense. Uh, lease purchase, um, lease purchases seventy-seven thousand eighty dollars and fifty-six cents. Is this the identical proposal that we're looking at, Mr. Turner? Can you?
He's got it. Mute, mute.
Oh, no, uh, it's not, it's the same amount approximately. Well, I used three hundred and fifty thousand dollars when I did the budget. And that was a, a, the estimate they had given me prior, but I didn't know it was some odd cent. And so when I did my estimate, I used three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so uh I don't know exactly how much this is. I know it's three fifty something. So, but I didn't use the exact number because this is what I had prepared the budget, you know, a couple of months ago. Uh, but the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was an estimate that I used.
Okay, and, and, and the reason why I, I mentioned that is I, I was hesitant to go forward. I would like to see it since it hasn't happened yet and we're working on the twenty-twenty-one budget, can we get it placed into the actual budget? Because it's gonna be an actual expense that we take home for twenty-twenty-one, so that it is accurately reflected in our numbers as we go through this process.
Yeah. But I guess we, in doing so and getting the financing and getting the numbers, that would give us a pretty good idea. I mean, that would give us getting the financing contract would tell us exactly what it's gonna be.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it should be that, like I said, I, I used three hundred, when I did my estimate, I used three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the uh interest rate, the same interest rate.
That, that's all from there.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Okay, so let me ask one more time before we move on, is there was a uh motion on the floor by Mr. St. Columbia to move forward with the acquisition as proposed and to prepare a um ordinance for the council regarding the contract itself, per Mr. Valley's recommendation. Is there a second?
I, I'll second that.
Mr. Adely, say it's the motion. Any other discussion or question about the motion?
Disappoint a clarity, it would simply be a resolution. There wouldn't need to be an ordinance.
Well, for the contract, you mean?
Yes, sir. Just that, uh, uh, two weeks from now, it would simply be a resolution, it won't be a ordinance, just approved the practice.
Thank you, Mr. Val. So, uh, correction noted. So prepare the or, I mean, the uh resolution for a lease contract for the next meeting. Any other questions or or discussion? If not, call grow.
St. Columbia. St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Franklin. Crockett. Davis.
Yes.
Forward. Etherly.
Yes.
Have three yes, three no answer.
Yes.
Oh, Crockett, yes. I have four yes.
Motion passes. Alright, thank you very much. And um so we'll proceed accordingly with that. Motion, thank you very much. I think is the last item on our agenda. And if you don't mind, Ms. Ramsey, I'm a little bit at a disadvantage on this. Do, do you think you could describe, the question for the council, I believe is um, some vehicle purchases? Would you mind discuss or introducing that?
Uh, yes, sir. We're looking at a truck for the landfill. Uh, a four-wheel drive for out there. A fi- a pickup truck for the fire department. Uh, the one the assistant chief currently drives is not operable and has been worked on so many times, it can't be worked on anymore. And then a code enforcement vehicle, uh, that would be a new vehicle uh, uh, for Mr. Gant. And uh, the landfill truck and the fire department truck, we're trying to find a twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. We're getting various prices because of what's on them, and it looks like we might be looking at twenty-six to twenty-seven thousand for each of those. Uh, the code enforcement vehicle would be a car. Uh, and we're looking at, uh, we tried to make some calls today and several of the models that we asked for prices on are sold out already. They are gonna try and see if they can find something, but the average price of what we're gonna get for a small car is gonna run around twenty-six thousand. And we would put uh those in a package. And a finance package also.
So the um assistant fire chief vehicle, the code vehicle and the landfill vehicle.
Yes, sir.
And uh, Mr. Turner, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna try to pay cash for those, is that right?
I don't know, that's what I had suggested. I didn't think that we were gonna try to finance them.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that was, that was my suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
So in that case, then the decision by the council tonight would mean that we'd move forward on it tomorrow. Since we're, is that right, Mr. Val?
Uh, yes, sir. It, it would, it would be just an expenditure. Uh, you buy them all a state contract, is that correct?
Correct.
If a state contractor does not have to be bid, so if they approve it tonight at state contract rate, it would not have to be bid, it's just a approval.
I got a question.
Mr. Crockett.
When may we uh approve buying vehicles for the landfill and a new vehicle for the code and a new vehicle for uh the fire department?
Well, we haven't. That's, that's what we're discussing tonight.
Oh, I thought you was.
You cut out on us, but um, but no, ma'am, that's, we haven't, we haven't agreed to do that yet. You cut out on us, but, um, but no, ma'am, that's, we haven't, we haven't agreed to do that yet. I mean, I don't think we have.
Ms. Crockett, I think that's what the discussion is tonight. Is there actually you to, to approve it? This is what the discussion is.
So, any other questions come, or discussion? So, question for the council would be the acquisition of. Uh, as stated by Ms. Ramsey. On the state contract, a vehicle for the assistant fire chief. The, um, code. Officer and the landfill officer or manager, management, manager. And there's no plan to finance those, so it would be a. A, a motion to approve the purchase of those at the limits as described by Ms. Ramsey. Any discuss, any other discussion or questions about that? So, so is there a motion to adopt that? Going once. So, uh, one more time, just in case somebody didn't get it off mute. Uh, the question for the council is a vehicle for code landfill and fire department. At the limits and on site contract as explained by Ms. Ramsey. One more time. Is there, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I have a question. Uh, are, are these replacement vehicles? Uh, are these additional to?
Your replacement.
Replacing the vehicles that we have.
Yes, sir.
And the, the vehicles that are out there are.
Okay, so what? What vehicles are we replacing? Because I only hear that we're replacing a vehicle for the fire department. Because we're not replacing a vehicle for, uh. Landfill or for, uh, code, cause code has a vehicle. We're, we're buying a vehicle. It's not a replacement, Mr. St. Columbia.
That's why I asked that question. I kinda wondered about that.
Well, I guess you could say it both ways, but there was a code truck that's now been used, I think, by the street department. And there was a landfill truck that's now been used by the street department. So. There has been a landfill truck and there has been a code truck. And there still are those trucks. They're just being used by other departments. So. And then, as Ms. Crockett said, the fire department truck would be in, you know, replacement of an existing vehicle, but the.
How long has landfill truck in the, in the, uh, code truck been away from those departments?
I'm gonna say a couple of months, but of course, we didn't have a person at landfill, so.
A couple of months? Not the code? How long code been without a, a vehicle?
Well, I mean, you know, we had that truck with the lights and the thing on the side that said code. We, I, I'm not sure exactly when. The, we gave it to the street department. They fixed it and it's being used right now. I saw it the other day. And then the truck that Bob Gaston drove is being used, I don't know if Mr. Jones is still on here, but it's being used by the street department also.
Mr. Jones, how long that? The, the truck from code been in, in your department?
Oh, I say about, about, about four months.
Okay, so code doesn't have a truck?
The code?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they got one truck.
Okay, so. You doing what now?
I mean, we're, we're talking about Mr. Gant, really.
Okay, well, what, what is the question again, Ms. Crockett?
My question was, how long have you had the truck that was in code? Have you had the truck since? It has to be more than four months, cause Mr. Gant been in code more than four months.
Well, I know that, but, uh, you know, I guess Mr. Gant didn't want the truck and, uh, uh, we, we passed it down. It didn't work at the landfill because the truck didn't have no power. So we kept it over here at the street and sanitation.
No, I'm saying, was the, the truck was already gone before Mr. Gant was hired, right?
Uh, no, ma'am. No, ma'am.
But it, it, it wasn't working.
Yeah, well, it, 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 it was working, but it wasn't working. I'll put it to you that way.
Well, I don't understand what's, okay. We deal with, okay.
I mean, it, 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 it needed some work done to it, Ms. Cro.
No, it was there. It's been there, but. Anyway, Mr. Wilbur got it running. Anyway, um, other questions or? Comments? Okay. That's the thing on the agenda, so. Uh, there are no other questions or comments about that last, I think it's the last thing on the agenda. So if there's no other discussion on that item, then I guess we'll push that off to another meeting. In the meantime, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm over with adjourn.
If St. Columbia moves adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second to the motion. There's no opposition, meaning adjourn. Thank you very, well, before we adjourn. Uh, are we gonna meet next Tuesday on a workshop? James, I, I saw something on there about that. Or do we wanna just wait until the next scheduled meeting?
What's the date of the next meeting?
Nineteenth, I think.
I mean, I would. I would like to go ahead and meet next Tuesday if, if, you know, we have enough people to make it productive. I wanna just meet and meet, but. I don't wanna wait until the nineteenth, just to start discussing some stuff I like to do it next Tuesday.
That would be fine with me.
Okay, is there any objection to meet next Tuesday for a workshop? If not, then let's go ahead and try to schedule that. And, um, let's try to keep them at five thirty or six, cause I'm gonna be honest with you. I get confused at where. We try and change the times. Is six o'clock okay if we stick to that? Anybody have a problem with that?
Six.
Six is far from.
I've scheduled for Tuesday, six P. M. And, uh, Mr. Very much.